learners to reach their full potential. And I just would like to introduce all of our guests tonight. So we'll start off with the trustees. So we have a brand new trustee, semi-brand new, but Charlie Fox is with us. Trustee Marty Wilson, trustee Tony Ward, trustee Susan Perot, trustee Shelley Coburn, trustee David Todd, and also I am the chair, Rod Ross. Thank you very much. The staff that are present tonight, we have Gordon Stewart, the superintendent, Brian Iselli, the secretary treasurer, Woody Bradford, the assistant superintendent, Mal Gill, assistant superintendent, Shin Chan, the assistant secretary treasurer, Barry Bunyan, assistant superintendent, Joanne Adshar, our communications manager, Judy Swanson, the executive assistant, Paul Barbeau, our technical support specialist, and Dale Vold as our IT technical support person. Also, we have some guests here tonight. We'll be welcoming you later on. Mike Pugh is the district principal, Aboriginal education, and Ron Stare will also be with us. He is the district principal, LFMSS, and summer school. Our partner groups that are with us tonight. Hooman Ansari is the QP 1851 president, and forgive me if I've spoken your name incorrectly. I apologize. Tanya Kerr, the LTA president, Graham Esplin, the LTA vice president, Alicia Rempel, DPAC president, Kim Anderson, the LVPA vice president, and Shelley Sondegaard, the QP 1260 representative. I'd now like to move through the report from in camera. And tonight, vice chair David Todd, can you give us an update of what we discussed in in camera tonight?
Thank you. In the in-camera meeting tonight, we talked about personnel and property.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. I need a mover for that the Board of Education adopts the consent agenda items as provided. A mover and a seconder, please.
So moved by Charlie Fox.
Thank you, and seconded by Suzanne Perot. All those in favor, please. And it passed. Thank you unanimously. Very good. Thank you. Moving right along. Consideration of tonight's agenda. I'd like a mover for the agenda be approved as presented for tonight's meeting. Can I have a mover, please? David Todd is moving it and seconded by Charlie Fox. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of tonight's agenda then. Thank you. And it is unanimous as well. Thank you very much. Number six, we have the superintendent's report. 6.1, the superintendent's report, the annual truth and reconciliation update. So if we can have the superintendent come on at this point. Thank you very much. Go ahead, superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Ross, and good evening to everybody. And again, this is a great opportunity for us to celebrate. And these have been certainly some challenging times out there. And hey, great to have some good news, you know, as the province will continue to kind of open up and restart. And yeah, and the timing with this report couldn't be better because I think we've needed that. We've needed an opportunity through these challenging times to continue to look at the great work that Langley School District's doing. Because we have great people, and we've got four people here tonight that are going to speak to the work we're doing around our Aboriginal programs and the work around truth and reconciliation. And I can speak personally. My journey on this one has been absolutely an incredible, steep learning curve. I thought I knew a lot. Social studies teacher, my past, I realized how little I knew. And the last number of years that, you know, I've come to really, on behalf of Mike Morgan and now district principal of Aboriginal programs, Mike Pugh, and along with all the staff within our Aboriginal programming department and all of our teachers, really helping me and our district moving forward with our understanding of the work we need to do there, recognizing our past as something that we've needed to address and really looking, you know, to the good work we could do together to go forward. This presentation tonight is in no way meant to not acknowledge what will be National Indigenous Peoples' Day on June 21st. We will have a June 15th board meeting, which we will acknowledge that that day will be upcoming, and we will make sure not to miss that. But we looked at what would be, quite frankly, a very packed agenda on the 15th. This isn't something you do in five minutes. You want to do it to the service it deserves and certainly allow for a longer period of time here to really be able to kind of put forth all the good work over there. And there's been a ton. So certainly District Principal Mike Pugh will kick us off and do some introductions and then really looking forward to the presentation. Thank you. Over to you, Mike.
Thank you and Superintendent Gord Stewart. Good evening, everybody. It's been a while since I've been here to speak with you. It was back in October where I was able to present to the board. And obviously, welcome to trustee Charlie Fox, who will be hearing me for the first time tonight. We did want to kind of frame our work tonight around the First Peoples' Principles of Learning and that what we're going to discuss tonight is ultimately learning is supporting the well-being of the self, the family, the community, the land, the spirits, and the ancestors. It's relational and focused on connectedness. Ultimately requires an explorations of one's identity, recognizes that role of indigenous knowledge, and most importantly here at the end, I think, connecting to what we're going to talk about tonight is it's embedded in memory, history, and story. And so we, as a district, began our journey of truth and reconciliation there, as you can see on the plaque, coming out of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission in 2015, and that it was a commitment that we, as a district, would live up to and continue moving forward on. And so as part of that is our presentation here this evening. I always share this. I think this, I found it at Alder Grove Community Secondary School in October at their Orange Shirt Day. And I think it speaks to really what reconciliation is about and what we believe in this district. And so it's care about knowing more, even when you think you've heard it 1,000 times. Listen, hear, learn. There is healing in the telling of our histories, and reconciliation is in the willingness to listen and to learn. And it's the Truth and Reconciliation Commission that establishes, really, that reconciliation is about establishing and maintaining mutually respectful relationships between Aboriginal and non-Aboriginal peoples in this country. And I bring this in here to highlight because I think the two pieces that we're going to share this evening really highlight that piece about establishing and maintaining mutually respectful relationships and that really starting to delve into the awareness of the past, the acknowledgement of the harm, and the atonement for the causes and actions to change the behavior. And I shared with you back in October that really reconciliation for all of us, it begins with yourself. It's about understanding what your own worldview is. From that, having an understanding of that shared history and then figuring out what are the actions that you can take towards reconciliation? And how do you fit in there? And yes, there are things that we can do bigger as a group, but there's also individual activities that you can do. We talked about in October, the words, the language, thanks to Sesmalat, that we've put up in our boardroom here of Yashto, Skeko-Yoas, working together, and Natsamat, Latzmat, that idea of having one heart, one mind, or wanting yourself. And that these words are not just words to put up on the wall, but they are beliefs that we live by. And I hope that you'll see tonight in the two presentations of how it involves working together and that kind of, that idea of coming to one heart, one mind. And so tonight, the first presentation, first part of the presentation is about a professional learning opportunity called Learning Through Story. And joining me this evening are two incredible teachers in our district, Leslie Gunning and Devon Stokes Bennett, who are going to share a little bit with you about the experience of learning through story.
Hello, on camera. I'm Leslie Gunning, and we're going to leave our masks on if that's okay. But I swear we are who we say we are.
And I'm Devon Stokes Bennett.
And this story starts a few years ago in 2019. I was at the time a full-time teacher at Iron Mountain Secondary School, and I was teaching BC First Peoples 12 and English First Peoples 12. And Devon was up at the board office, and a committee was kind of struck to start having the conversation of if we were going to run a book club and if it was going to be able to be available to every staff person in the Langley School District, like, what would that look like? How would we even do that? Knowing like what Mike Pugh started talking about with us today about worldview, like, how would we do that? And so for three months, we just read books. There were five of us, like I said, me, Devon, Penny Carnwright from Langley Fine Arts School, Monica Spritzer, who was at the district and now is the Fearless LSS librarian, and Janet Stromquist, Aboriginal district teacher. And so we came together and we read a lot of books. We'd already read many, but we really, really wanted to sort of choose the best books. And so we had to come to consensus. We had to talk about what books would be the best fit. And we had to create some guiding principles, which are sort of the next piece here. So these were our principles. This is how we were going to guide our sessions. Again, this was the planning stage. We didn't know who was going to sign up, if anybody would sign up. But we knew there was a need coming from the field. And like we sort of know, the best ideas that come from the grassroots usually sort of take off. And so unbeknownst to us, that's sort of what happened. You can see on your screens here, I'm not going to read those out for you, but this was really what guided us. We really wanted to make sure we created a safe space, that we were going to highlight authentic voices, and that ultimately, we were going to model how to have these tough conversations with both, with one another, non-Indigenous people to non-Indigenous people, but also honoring Indigenous peoples' worldviews in that space. How to do that? There was a lot of fear, there still is a lot of fear about how to have these conversations, how to learn about this important content. And we really didn't want that fear to stop people from engaging with these authentic voices. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think just two things I'd emphasize, amazing job that Leslie just has done, is it really is about that self-work and disruption of your own thinking. And often, when you read a story from an authentic voice, you'll sit with that discomfort, and it might take even a year for you to really land and explore why. But it gets into places maybe other things might not. And it also is a low threshold. If you do have some anxiety or you just don't know where to start, story is very inviting. It's something that everybody can partake in and enter in through. And I think that was a big part for us too, right? Was people are, you know, feeling some anxiety, where do I start? This was something everybody felt welcomed into.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So exactly, Devon. So the access points were huge. We really, we know readers read lots of different things. And some people read long things, and some people read shorter things. And some people want to read nonfiction, and other people wanted to read fiction. So if you look on sort of the left or maybe right of your screen, I'm not sure. The left of my, what I'm looking at, year one, these are the books that we selected painstakingly, thoughtfully. These were the books that we wanted to give teachers the opportunity to read. And you'll see that was in year one, that started in September of 2019. Before we knew how that year was going to end, we started by reading these books. And you'll see there's a lot more there. We wanted to provide a lot of choice, and we really wanted to root readers in both humor and knowledge, not just some of the really serious topics we think of sometimes when we think about the indigenous population of what we now call Canada. We wanted to honor those stories, but we also wanted to celebrate stories. So we really chose so, so carefully. We started that book club. We met in the Aboriginal Department's library. We ate food, we sat together, we talked, and then the world changed, and we all got locked down. And so we didn't know what that was going to look like. We didn't know how that was going to end. And lo and behold, when we sent a message out to the group, everybody wanted to meet one last time. So we met electronically. We had conversations about these books, and it really was a representation of that learning community that was fostered in that room altogether before the pandemic hit. As a working group, as a planning group, those five people that I started talking about, we met all through the summer. We knew that we were going to run that book club again. We knew the feedback that we were getting was really, really strong. We knew that we really were valuing both of that, that sort of internal work that we were doing as a group, but we also were starting to see some of the ripples of what it means to empower people within their own school communities to do the work that we were doing altogether and then go out and sort of embody that notion of reciprocity, to receive that targeted support within that tight learning community, and then to return to their communities, their own teaching communities, their own learning communities, their own schools, sort of take on that responsibility to now pass on the things that they have learned. We knew that was really, really important. So the five of us met through the pandemic, reading. And you'll notice on the other side of the page, we picked different books. There were more books. There are not just, this is, we're in a renaissance of indigenous literature. So there are so many books to talk about. And then when we launched this learning initiative this September, we filled up in three days. So we had a waitlist. We talked a lot about, like, should we make it bigger? Because look at all how popular. And we really fought that notion because we knew the intimacy was paramount. We knew that to go for a whole year reading books, that depth was what was making this a really powerful and important initiative. So we did not go bigger. We chose to go deep with a few, hoping that that reciprocity could go within their own school communities. The last thing that I will say, there are so many things to say, but the last thing that I will say before I throw it to you is that at the end of each year, each teacher got $100 grant paid by instructional services in the district to buy indigenous resources for their classroom, based on their learning. It could be for their personal learning, or it could be for their classrooms. And so that reciprocity of now go and take on the responsibility, take what you've learned and carry forward was really important. And we saw sort of a generous spirit as a result of that as well, which was a really important piece that Janet Stromquist taught us, to be generous.
Yeah, and what I'll add to that is just how beautiful it all ripples out. Our team of five, and this is so, there are new leaders in this group. We were all equal contributors, very unique personalities, very different personalities, that have done this work ourselves through story, disrupted our own worldviews, challenged each other, stretched each other, supported each other. And then to share that out with the two cohorts, the cohorts from the year before and the cohort during this crazy, crazy year, and then them themselves within their school communities, within their personal communities, having those conversations, inviting others into those books, just how it ripples has been, I think, so humbling and personally satisfying. The other thing that bought us was how so many people from different walks of life in our district chose to enter into this. I've never seen this in a professional learning series, ever. We have had custodians, SCA, support workers, teachers from K to 12, all subjects. There has been, it's just been, I'm still awed by that. So I'll shut up about that.
No. That's a good point. It was on the slide. That's good. Yeah. So we did our best to collect data. We were disrupted, and so that made it a little bit challenging. Also, when you're talking about books, sometimes you forget to handle the form for them to fill out. So to our own flaws, something we can definitely improve on is getting this feedback. But it was really important for us to know how our learners were feeling about this process. And so you can see that a pie graph, as a social teacher, I'm very excited about talking about this pie graph. 24 respondents, and they could choose and click whichever option. They could click as many or as few. But you can see here that, you know, of the 24 respondents, 22 said, "Learning about our shared history through an indigenous lens made an impact." 23 people said, "Studying authentic indigenous voices benefited their practice." 18 said that this book club disrupted and evolved their own worldview. And then always another, "What else did it do?", and responses and thoughtful things for us to think about. There's also some just general feedback from participants there. And what I think that I, you know, what we learned, and I talked to the, we talked to the other group members actually today because we're planning for our last session next week of year two, was one of the things that we sort of really thought about is like, there was a significant amount. Every time we had a session, we met, you know, a week before, we planned, we thought about it. It was a lot of work to do this well. It's not something you want to rush when you're analyzing and thinking about a worldview, definitely one that's not your own. You need to be thoughtful, you need to be intentional, you need to make sure, we needed to make sure that we were on the right track, that we were being super respectful. And so it is really important to sort of say that that is not an easy thing, it's not a small thing, and it takes a significant amount of work, but it's super rewarding. And so when we think about reconciliation and when we think about those actions, goodness me, like, that is a key component, that this work is important, but it is extensive.
I think one of the most validating pieces was having people come to the group who they themselves were indigenous and just looking to reclaim or reconnect with that heritage. And that this felt safe enough for them to be part of that journey was just incredibly, it was, I'll go up.
It was a need, yeah. It was definitely a pronounced need that was being, that safe community that maybe wasn't always in other spaces was definitely attempting to be made in this space. And I think that we were successful at that. So when we connect back up to these larger notions of the calls to action, you know, these calls to action are important because there's a responsibility for us to be, you know, we don't want to say to teachers, you know, do hard things, but we're not going to help you. We want to, we want to be there, we want to walk you through it, we want to support you, we want to make sure that you can see that modeling so that you feel like you have the capacity to do this within your own school communities, with your own staff and with your own students. So it's really important that we create these spaces to have these conversations. And I would argue that when we do that, we, what we're able to see that these conversations are not only important to know how to do, but they benefit everyone. This benefits all of us. This helps all of us. And it certainly is a step in the right direction. So those were the two, you can see sort of in yellow, those were the two aspects of the calls to action, Education 63, that really were targeted in this work. And so I just wanted to point those out so that we can see that this is a direct connection to those calls to action. Super important.
Excellent. And yeah, just generally increasing that confidence and that capacity to continue learning in their own communities for themselves and wherever they're situated. All right. So the good news is that you too can learn through story. This is another example of a ripple that's emerged from this work, working closely with, and I have to do it, Janet, I'm sorry, the amazing Janet Stromquist at the Amman Library Department, who runs the library. And just so you know, we have one of the most amazingly curated libraries of indigenous resources I've ever seen in any district, and I've seen a few districts now. And that's due to Janet. And there's been an opportunity to create a district digital library in which we can have audiobooks and ebooks and bring stories to life in a different way and make them accessible to all staff members, not just teachers, not just students, but everybody, which is something that came from this work, is how important that was. It's not just narrow our thinking in terms of our community, that it's just teachers and students. It is so not. It's all of us. So Janet has been adding to this district digital library a whole bunch of amazing indigenous works that are available as audiobooks and ebooks, and you all should have access to this. So yes, I'm going to show you shortly how to download the app and have immediate access to a whole bunch of vetted, amazing resources that you can spend your whole summer reading. And we invite you to do so. However, before I do that, I'm going to make Leslie speak to these books. So look, you're shocked at this moment. You have four books on the screen, and I want you to think in your head, hmm, which one do I want to bite into? Okay, so listen closely. Go.
So this is a really good example of how we curated the books for the book club. We were just thinking of all of you, and we were thinking, you know, for different types of readers. So I'm just going to sort of go in clockwise. And I know, Mr. Stewart, you are a big Wogamis fan, so we're thinking about you. One Native Life is by Wogamis. It is so good. It is all nonfiction. It is all stories from his life, and it's about three pages each story. So if you just need like a quick little pick-me-up, it's very hopeful, but also incredibly authentic. One Native Life, that's a great pick. Grading Sweet Grass is for our science, math, humans, also everyone, but also science people, I'm looking at you. Robin Wallkimmer is amazing. This is one of the best audiobooks, hands down, I've ever listened to in my life. If you're a walker, if you're a gardener, this is the book for you. It is, it is full of so much knowledge you didn't know that you didn't know.
And just add that she herself does the audiobook, She Speaks In, which goes to show the power of audiobooks now, where authors themselves are only not stories.
Yeah, so good. So you can tell we're excited. Indigenous Rights is one of the, if you were going to buy one book, and this would be the book that I would say to buy, it covers every issue that you can think of that pertains to Indigenous and Indian Métis people. And it tells you, it's straight with witty and sassy commentary. It has one of the best footnotes in every chapter you've ever seen in your entire life. And any question you've ever been unsure to ask, it's going to answer it for you. It's fantastic. And it's nonfiction.
And it's nonfiction. And what I love about it is it actually started off as a blog post. And so each of the chapters, they're short, they're layman's terms, they're cheeky, and they directly cut right to the point. So it's something you can take, browse the contents and be like, yes, I want to know a little bit more about that. Step into three to seven pages and be both entertained and disrupted at the same time.
It's so good. Great title. Love a great title. Indigenous Rights, get it? Yeah. Black Water is the last one. This book just came out. It is, it is beautiful. It is a memoir from a Cree author, David A. Robertson, who's a prolific author. I don't even understand how he's writing as much as he's writing. This book is, you feel like you're having a conversation with him, and it's just stunning. This is an example of what a curated list can feel like. This is an example of what happens when texts are accessible to you. And we would just invite you to give a read and, you know, let us know what you think because we love talking about these books. So that's a part of it. Talk to someone about it.
So take a moment, choose your title in your head. You don't have to tell anybody. One Native Life, Grading Sweet Grass, Black Water, Indigenous Rights. Because we're about to move to next screen, and I'll show you how to download the app on any personal device you have and have immediate access to any of these as well as many others. So choose your book and move along. Whatever device you have, go to your app store. You download Sora by Overdrive. This is what it looks like with a little weird astronaut.
Yeah, look for the blue alien guy.
And if you'd like, you can do this right now. If you have a personal device in your realm, just reach on out, open that app store, search Sora by Overdrive, look for the astronaut, and download. The next step is easy peasy. You just, you need to search for your school, and everybody's school is the same. It's the Langley School District. Or, if you can remember it, I always forget it, I'm saying it because I do. Your school setup code for every single human being in the district, student, staff, whoever it might be, is SD35CA. So you can enter that on that home screen where you're prompted for your school setup code, SD35CA. And then your login credentials are exactly the same as whatever you use to log into a district computer. You just use that same username and that same password, and you will immediately have access to everything. Browse and borrow. It's literally three clicks. So if you do not do this, I am going to personally be disappointed because it is three clicks. And there are so many amazing audiobooks and ebooks on the other side of this app, which is three clicks away from you and reading pleasure. Okay.
All right. Yeah, that's all.
That's it. That's all we've got. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devon and Leslie. And so that challenge goes out to the trustees to go in and later on, search through and find that book that speaks to you, as we do have a ton in there. That first session kind of shared work that's been done to support staff. And so now I'm going to call up Sesmalat. Sesmalat is our Hunka Minam language teacher, and she's going to share with you about the work around language and culture that she continues to do on a daily basis with the students in our district.
Hi, Chikasiam. Ay konat. Asiam yinasiaya, yinasiyala kwa. It's apu elio. Sesmalat konisgri, tunitsna khatlan. Amitap katwilem. Iya tanatamoch. Itiach, khatlanach, merchoyach, itsum yameth musteoch. Heilak tonis kwanawen, kunts itzkutsnala tonawoyo. Hi, Sabka. I said hi. Said, "Good evening, respected ones, friends, elders. How are you all this evening?" Sesmalat is my name. I come from Khatlan. I welcome you to the land of the Kati, Khatlan, Matsgri, and the Simiyamu people. It gives me great honor to be in front of you this day. I thank you all for that. Hi, Sabka. I was going to pretend I was leaving. Is it okay if I recommend a book? I really enjoyed A Mind Spread Out on the Ground. My new thing is reading a book along with an audio. And I follow Drew Hayden Taylor. I'll first tell you what A Mind Spread Out on the Ground means. That's Hodinashoni for depression. So that's good for people who work with the emotional and social piece with students. It was really a powerful book. But that's my new thing, is reading a book with the audio. All that's missing is that little chime. And I follow Drew Hayden Taylor on Twitter. And he was telling, he was put out there that he is a, reading a book for somebody, somebody else's book. And I said to him, I go, "Can you please add the chime?", and he said he would howl like a wolf. I thought that was really cool. And I've only met him on social media. I had the honor of meeting Richard Wogamis quite some time ago. Huge honor. I've been with the Langley School District since November 2016, where I've been working I, I've been with the Langley School District since November 2016, where I've been working on doing a lesson planning and communicative, communicative lessons for the program. I was teaching children through games, a lot of appropriated games I took from English into Hunkaminum. So I, I'm actually going to teach some of you right now how to greet a good friend and ask how they are. With a song, because I think you ought to hear one right now. Iitswel tonasiaa each a while. And you're going to say, ai, ai.
Ai, ai.
Okay. Iitswel tonasiaa each a while.
Ai, ai.
Iitswel tonasiaa, iitswel tonasiaa, iitswel tonasiaa each a while.
Ai, ai.
Let's do it again, kulet means again. Iitswel tonasiaa each a while.
Ai, ai.
Iitswel tonasiaa each a while.
Ai, ai.
Iitswel tonasiaa, iitswel tonasiaa, iitswel tonasiaa each a while.
Ai, ai.
This works really well in grade three class. And adults. So I, I wanted to talk about time. The time that I spent here in the Langley School District, I often get calls from a lot of, of my, some of my people from Hunkaminu speaking, speaking people that come and ask me questions about how the program works. And, and I said, we just incorporated the language program, language revitalization right into the Aboriginal program. So those are the questions that I, that are often asked of me. And I, I go, you know, that's above my pay grade. I don't, I don't understand it, I just know what I'm doing. I, I know I'm there to teach the, the children. When I first started, I only had two classes right at the beginning. At Dirty Peacock, I have five classes in only 45 minutes per, per week. And again, time is everything. I have taught CM Tamets, Sean Davids, to do the land acknowledgement. He's the first non-Indigenous person I've, I've taught to do the land acknowledgement in the language. You will find him on our website. He was really proud of himself when Luke came in and, and recorded him at the school. And we used, in the backdrop, we had Tom Wewetan at the time. So I put up a bulletin board that shows people the time of, the season, the seasons there. So Tom Wewetan, which is the time of the sweetwa. Sweetwa is Ulikin. And it's a, it's a species at risk, and they came in a huge abundance once upon a time right through these waters here. They used to go as far up as Mission, I was told by an elder, and the spawning grounds are right in Fort Langley. So this year was ideal conditions because the water was so low. So I was able to bring students out. I brought a grade six and seven class, walked right, walked them right out onto the land and showed them the, the ideal conditions for spawning for the, for this sweetwa. Now we're in Tom Fugwe, which is time of the spring salmon. And in between that, because I know there's a lot of seasons, Tom Kaka, which means the time of the high water. The water is rising up. So it is, for those of you who do rod fishing, there is a story of a killer whale that follows the spring salmon all the way, all the way up to as far as Agassi Bridge. And then the story continues there in Harrison Bay. I won't give it away, just in case you guys do take that Bad Rock Tours, it's called, with Sammy McKelsey, the story continues. I always tell people, the story continues. These are the things that I've been teaching when people give me a chance to talk. The thing is, I have no classroom, so the teachers always tease me about not having a classroom. I say, I can teach it, I could talk anywhere. I will stand outside, we, we stand outside, we went outside and we walked the land, and I talked to the students about walking the land and sharing the, the culture. So there is so much culture embedded in the language. The students are at a point now where if I'm speaking to them, they get frustrated because they can't communicate back to me. And that's, that just goes to show to me where they're at in their learning, because now I can go on to the next step in, in those responses, like how to get them to respond. This is all oral. I don't put the books in front of them. I get them to get up and if they're going to, you know, you know, we all get cheeky sometimes and restless. If they're going to do that with me, then they're going to get up and dance. And I get them to get up and dance and to speak the language, because there's total physical response, there is a correlation with movement and speaking the language. So, and sometimes I, I add in sign language. This is how the hearing impaired clap. So this is, if I do this in front of kindergartens, when I first came to Langley, Fort Langley, I was doing this in front of kids, they right away say, wanana ai, which means very good. Wanana ai. And actually, there's videos that has two young ladies from Katsi, Deanna Miller and Carlin Andres, who use, use this quite a bit. There's some videos that, that are put on the school website. That, that was because of the pandemic. I needed to know that I was still finding a way to teach the kids. And I don't ever say it's for homework. I just say, go have a look at it, so they don't feel that pressure during a pandemic. I don't want anyone stressed out. So the fresh air, the walking on the land, and using the language as I speak. So a lot of it became like kind of a talking tour. I'd say walking tour, but it's, it's a talking tour. And I get, I'm very fortunate that I have full engagement with the, with the, with the students. A grade seven teacher from Fort Langley Elementary has got me into his classroom to talk about identity. So I say, anta tawet, who am I? If I said this to my 40-year-old nephew, now a tawet, he would answer, anta kolochustin tunitsnak Kaotlin. He would say who he was, because when you say who you are or you're from, it should ground you. So that, that's really important in our culture. And just losing that, losing the language, we lost that big cultural piece. So as, as you've read in books, that importance of having the, the language in the culture is really important to our people. Oh, so it's going to get back to Sean Davids, that, see, there's always a story and I come back. It was time that I had with CM Tamets. I spent a lot of time with him. I'd go in, before I went and taught one of my classes, I'd go see him before that class, and I'd come back after that class. So I was seeing him three days a week, twice, twice, three days a week. That's when I was out of school. And I would, I would say it to him first, and then I'd make him say it, and then he'd record me so he could listen to it on his way home from work, because his mission was to be able to say the land acknowledgement by Monday. But I was right there in his, in his space. And again, if we use, if you've heard be, say eat or neat, that, those words in our language has to do with time and space. It's either proximity or it's time. So if I said, niya tani, and I really elongate it for, you know, just to embellish the story. It's either long time ago or far from here. So the, I really, when I speak like that, the kids will stop and listen, whatever they're, you know, gossiping with one another in class, and then that'll really stop them right in their tracks. And we've gotten to the point in our class where I used to have to translate into Konitumten, which is English. I used to have to translate back, and I do not have to do that anymore with this group. Now, this group that I'm talking about, it, Fort Langley Elementary, I deliberately bumped up their time from 45 minutes a week to 90 to 120. I didn't realize I was doing that, but after you've met me, you'll know that I like to talk a lot. And I always have to make sure that I have an appropriate crowd around before I can tell a good story. So it, it is, it has to do with time and having willing participants in front of me. And that makes the difference, because I do have classes that are, you know, here, here comes that lady again, we can go play a game. There's one class, I, there's, they're very spirited, so we have to go outside and play. So I've been playing games that an elder had recommended, because I was whining to her about not doing well with the teaching. And she was, oh, try this, you know, she always has a solution. And she sent me some, some games that, when she was younger, she used to play, because we had no TV back then. Some of us didn't. We had a TV, but it only had two channels. And it was called La Mete Art, which is kick, flick the stick. It's, it's kick the stick, but it's actually got to flick it, because if you kick it, you're going to hurt your foot. So the kids have to run and they have to flick the, the stick, and it goes, and they have to run behind the line. Well, I added in like hula hoops and, and skipping ropes and drums. So they have to jump through the hula hoops and say, eats and squawk, eats and squawk, eats and squawk, eats, which means I'm jumping, I'm jumping, I'm jumping. And they get to the skipping ropes, and they have to count to 10, they have to skip to 10, and they have to say it in the language. They have to run to the drums, sing two verses of the salmon song, or whatever song that I assign, so they have to know the song. One of the songs that I wanted to make sure that a lot of people knew by the end of the school year was Ies Tanawel Ahkwan, which is Happy This Day of Your Birth, so the birthday song. And that is on the website as well. And it won't take very long to teach everybody that one. So they have to sing the song, and then they, if I roll the dice, they have to guess the number in the language, and then they go and kick the stick and run back. And then the next person has to do it again. I was being cheeky one day, and I sent Mike Morgan and Mike Pugh a picture of teaching, I taught the kids to gamble in Hunkaminum with dice. So they had to roll the dice and say it in Hunkaminum, they had to guess before and lay down the play money. So they had to say the, the money in the language. And that was, it's different counting in money than it is in just counting. And that's actually on the website as well, if you want to have a look at that. The website is something that Luke and myself, and Deanna and Carlin came up with because of the pandemic. And on October 23rd, on October 23rd, 2020, was our first ever language revitalization Pro D Day. So we, we were really proud of that, that we organized that last year. We, we held it at Blacklock. We made sure that Mike Morgan was there, offensive coach, and Mike Pugh, defensive coach, because I'm a team player. I, I wanted to make sure that if we're going to go, if we're going to do this, we're going to go, we're going to see it through to the end. And just to state, you know, once upon a time, be the only Indigenous woman in the room, I would be very, very uncomfortable. I just wanted to share that, because it needs to be said, like because of that reconciliation piece, it needs to be said. You need to hear that. Anta tawet, who am I? Sesmalat konisqui tunitsnak Kaotlin. Asiam inasiaa inasiala kwa. Iitana shwalakha. Siyatala kutakas. Sklen. Respected ones, friends, elders, family. Thank you for listening. Setnamtsan. Niya tafsh walap. My hands are raised up, tee. Just to see, just seeing the work that is happening in this school district, just to remind you again that my Indigenous people phone me up and ask me questions all the time about how, how did you get there? How did you get there? I, I joined in as a, I just said, I just talk about it as stacking our team. We're stacking our team in the Aboriginal program. We're here and we're working hard, everyone has a role to play. We're all, we all have a role to play. Everyone's important and vital to what is happening in the school district and that reconciliation piece. And I just want to let you know that I feel safe. I feel safe enough to speak my mind, and I, and I thank you for that. Hi, Tsebka.
And I think she does speak to the, the Learn Hunkaminum website, which you can find attached to our district website, where when you have time, you can go and learn on your own. And so this evening, we also talked to the kids and, and the students, because the student voice is important to highlight here. And there was an incredible desire from them to learn the language of the land. The understandings they had, that this is the language of the land that is a need, it's an, it's, they talked about extinction, and that the need for it to be revitalized, and that they were playing a role in that. And that learning the language provided a greater understanding and connection to culture. And so we have Indigenous and non-Indigenous students coming together and learning together. They're taking that time, they're taking that time to come together to listen, to hear, to learn, because reconciliation is in the willingness to listen and to learn. And so tonight, we throw back to you the opportunities we've provided that you can all now be a part of, to go and understand your worldview, to learn more about the shared history, and to develop actions for yourself toward reconciliation. Hi, Tsebka.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for trustees? Do the trustees have any questions at all? Okay, I see a few questions showing up on my screen here. So the first question is from David Todd, I believe. Go ahead, David Todd, then we'll hear from Suzanne Perot, trustee.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Ross. Extremely, extremely moved. I, I, I want to say first off, I think the Honorable Judge Marie Sinclair asked us to become disruptors when he gave us the calls to action for truth and reconciliation. And I appreciate tonight's presentation. And um I appreciate tonight's um presentation because th- there was a kind of deliberate attempt to to lead us down this path to to help us listen and to help us learn. If if something's truly to be transformative, you need to build it from within. And uh, you know, I like the idea of the book studies and uh that that's a a pathway that the trustees are about to embark on. But wh- when I hear that um twenty-three educators have, it's benefited their practice, just the 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 book study, uh and so that is transformative. We're we're changing things. And I especially loved the last part where there was um the bringing language to life. I mean, it's ingenious, but kids just love that. Kids absolutely love that, they live in that. You know, when you're asking them to jump or hop and you're saying the words and you're just, it's repetitive. It's it's learning, but it's fun learning. We know that active helps in language acquisition. So it's just an amazing thing. And I I guess the last thing I have uh to any one of the presentators tonight was, what's been your greatest mistake that allowed you to learn the most? Your greatest mistake that allowed you to learn the most? Thank you.
No pressure at all.
No, no pressure at all. Uh, and I'll I'll let the rest of the group if they want to come up. I think the greatest mistake I've made within this role is talking too much and not listening. And there is so much to be learned. Spend any time with Sesmalot, you can see there's stories for everything and there's learning within all those stories. And you know, we talk about, you really have one mouth, but three ears. So you have your two on your face, but the one in the heart. And learning to listen through all three uh is, it's an important skill. And so taking that time for myself has been recognizing that sometimes I talk too much and hey, it happens to the best of us, but taking those times to really listen is uh probably the best thing I've ever done.
Um, I'd I'd have to say I make mistakes daily. And it's only through the grace and generosity of many friends. This is a good thinking one, particularly on the friend who has had so much patience with me over decades as I've gone through this learning journey and how I am mortified at many times when I think back of um things that she was experiencing that I was oblivious to. Um, and uh just very grateful for the communities that allow us to make those mistakes and hold us up and hold us to task when required. So I can't say I have one glaring um mistake because uh I can think of twenty today also far. So that would be me.
Um, I would say, great question. Um, and also that um me, two come to mind. One was not giving credit to my colleagues that they could handle it, thinking I had to have the most perfect pitch, the most um thoughtful, the most incredible pitch to bring them over. And I think I needed to give them more credit. And second of all is like maybe not talking about those those mistakes um enough. Sometimes within a district, you um uh there's perceptions that of expertise or knowledge in a way that doesn't talk a lot about how you got there, which is messy and a lot of people's generosity and investment in you. Um, and uh the permission to make those mistakes, which I would argue is what so many of the people within the Aboriginal Department do. Um, we are there to do the work, it's not indigenous people. And um the Aboriginal Department is there, they they really support us in saying, do it. And we're gonna, we're gonna correct you and we're gonna tell you. And Janet did that within our book club. Um, Aboriginal support workers do that all the time with bravery and courage um in a way that um I can't even really have. So uh yeah, talking about those mistakes um more clearly so that people understand that that's part of the journey would be something that I would say.
I know with uh art, I come from a family artist, so I'm not one. But I know with art, if there's a mistake on the art, it's supposed to be like that because life is messy and we're only human, we're gonna make mistakes. And uh doing this language revitalization uh program, um I made lots of mistakes and I I started to journal. And um, and it's just listening to the elders um writing things down, not getting angry, not getting upset with myself, not beating myself up. Um, and just making sure that the work gets done and that if I taught a student one word, then that's enough. You know, because it is a difficult language to learn and they're learning orally. And it, they weren't supposed to speak. The students were supposed to speak, but the way this class has went, I I got them to start speaking. So um this class that I'm talking about is um doing the, going, is doing the land acknowledgement in the language. And the non-indigenous students drop the um welcome. They drop it, they know where to drop it, it was so cool. And but the the two indigenous students from Quantlin, um welcome. And and I've got a book that's probably this thick that has all my mistakes in it. I go back to them so I can read them and remind myself that, you know, what works and what doesn't. And um, but it's it's good when um people remind me of that. I, I'm always gonna make mistakes and I'm always gonna learn from them, always. Because one uh teacher, professor at UBC had told me, you make mistakes, you won't make them again. That's one thing about learning, you make a mistake, you won't do it again. So I have to write that down twenty times. Hi, Chukasiam.
Thank you very much. And I guess my other trustees, they'd like to ask some questions. So trustee Perro, you're next, please, and then I've got trustee Marty Wilson next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Trustee Ross. Thank you, Mr. Pugh and team, for all your hard work that you do for our students and our staff so that as a collective, we can come together and learn and grow from our mistakes and our journey, wherever we are in that process. It's it's in, it's invaluable, it's life-changing and it's going to hit generations undoubtedly. I really don't have a question, I just have a comment that I want to share outside of my deep appreciation. I I love and I'm thankful for the work each of you are doing. I love this book club concept and I I'm looking forward to reading Braiding Sweetgrass. The description resonated with my spirit, with my heart. And Sesmalot Fern, a mind spread out. There's my journey right there. And um, you know, sometimes our mistakes look like owning the journey. Just simply owning the journey and being on that path. And that's a difficult place for some of us to be, whether we're learning about our own indigenous roots and and unlayering and uncovering. And definitely our community is that of grace and humility for those of us who are walking that path. And uh, and Fern, you um, you come consistently with humility in your journey and courage. And that makes you so so accessible to our students. That humility and that softness of spirit, softness of heart, I just want to encourage you, encourage you in that. When I saw Mr. David's video go up, this, I think it was this last week with his learning and even his joy in the learning of the language, uh it just speaks profoundly to your character and how you lead and teach and honor each of us, wherever we are in the juncture of of this conversation, whether it's our own personal journey or we're coming in as a as an ally to support. You you have been steady in that role and um that's invaluable for our district. So I thank you, I thank you, Mike, for your leadership and the ladies who presented tonight and those in the background we're not seeing. Uh, you guys are just a fabulous group of people that make us better human beings. And I just want to thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Perro. Go ahead, Marty Wilson.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. It was so moving and so inspiring. And just the thought of all of those children being able to learn the language and um that language not being lost is incredibly powerful. So thank you for all the hard work all of you are doing and all the other people. I know there's so many more people that uh that we don't see. But I am truly excited about this app and all the reading I'm going to be doing. That is awesome. I had no idea. Um, I'm just wondering, I know while you were talking about it, I heard you say something about it's for everyone. Um, does the staff all know and and how do they know? Like what, is it posted somewhere? Is it for parents as well? Um, and is it advertised somewhere that parents can see it? And can we tell like how many people are accessing it and how much use the app is getting? Because I think that's really exciting.
Uh, well, this is so brand spanking new that you are some of the first people to be able to um really engage on it. There's a lot of logistical systems, um support pieces being put in place, but we're hoping that we're gonna have a blitz of all staff and students will occur before the summer hits because anything on this app, of course, is available for summer reading, right? And um that's, so it it's it's all coming and expect, expect that soon. And uh I'll also just share that we are working at the public library and we'll have unrestricted access to their entire digital collection for all our students and staff through this app without them having to do anything. So we just, there's, we're very excited for a lot of reasons. I I will leave because I could keep talking about that.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much. And uh I guess my final comment that I have is uh, I just want to tell you how proud we are as a district for the good work that you're doing. And I want to thank you uh for making the comment about the reports of mistakes and life is messy. And uh I just think that as educators, we need to embrace mistakes more because uh that's where I think real progress happens. So I make mistakes all the time and that's huge learning. And then I'll leave tea tonight already. So anyway, thank you very much. And uh if I could uh have a mover and a seconder for the superintendent's report on the annual truth and recreation update, that the Board of Education received a superintendent report on the annual truth and recreation record reconciliation update for information as presented, moved by Marty Wilson, seconded by Tony Ward. Okay, and all those in favor? And thank you very much for me to carry that in and out of state as well. So thank you very much for that. Uh, superintendent, on to six point two, the summer session two oh two one, please.
Well, there's a tough act to follow and uh yeah, uh what a fantastic presentation. But uh you know what, we've got another one. We're gonna keep them coming and uh we've got our district principal, Ron Stare. Uh, those that have been on the board a while will know Ron in terms of he's been involved with summer session for quite some time. And he thought when he went to Langley Fundamental Middle Secondary School, he'd be done, but wrong. He gets to stay with that uh because of all of his knowledge there. And he's done an absolutely incredible job. But when I think when we started, what summer session used to have to what it has now, unbelievable. Um, you know what, credit to to Ron and the folks he's worked with to make that uh happen. Just uh, you know what, who knows what things are gonna unfold with the, you know, again, with the kind of lightning up of restrictions. But we certainly are planning on a more vibrant program than we had last year, but we still were able to make one happen last year and many didn't. And there's many that aren't doing anything this year. And and once again, Langley stepping on up. Uh, and uh it'll certainly have some aspects that are a little bit different, but a rich program. And uh Ron's gonna take the opportunity to walk you through some of it tonight. But again, thank you, Ron, for today and also for the great work you're doing here. If you step on up and click it right there.
Thanks very much, Gord, for the introduction and the kind words. And I just want to thank you trustees uh for the opportunity to provide you with an update on our district plans for summer session this year. And uh as always, our summer programs are meant to align with our district uh mission, vision and values. And uh um in particular, there's like, I mean, there's a lot of different things, but uh the meaningful choices that are in there, uh the flexible and connected environments and obviously doing that in an inclusive setting and also being innovative is really valuable to us. So uh we're just proud of the fact that it's a nice connection uh to help all of our programs uh during the summertime. Last year was an obviously a very unusual year for summer programs. Um, we were dealing with the COVID protocols that were in place at the time. And uh we had to limit our focus to key areas. And uh Gord already touched on this a little bit, but last year, lots of school districts um chose not to go ahead with some things. Uh, we tried to sort of wait as long as we could to see what we can make possible. Uh, so we're proud of that. Uh, last year, we did blended learning for academic secondary, which was a mix of virtual and in-person learning. We only had one secondary state last year. Uh, and that blended opportunity was actually probably a good uh training session for a lot of the people that moved on to doing blended learning at their own school uh during this past year during our quarter system for secondary. Uh, we had a very high success rate overall. Um, and I don't have the exact numbers for you, but we we talked about it afterwards. And there was really only a few students that didn't complete. And the nice thing, the way we had set up the blended learning last year was it gave students the opportunity, if they wanted to carry on and go to Langley Education Center to do their learning there. Uh, so I think we had about twelve students that didn't complete and wanted to. And then the other ones just didn't feel like they wanted to carry on, but for the most part, a very high success rate. Uh, the other thing is for our elementary programs, obviously, we typically have a very robust elementary program uh with over twenty-five-hundred students. Uh, last year, we had to limit that with the COVID protocols that were in place. So we chose as a district to focus on our primary students and in particular, focus on literacy because that's a key success uh guide and as guide for success as students move up to the higher grades. If they don't have the basic literacy skills, we know that they struggle as they move up. And we also shifted our focus to be by recommendationally from the home school because we needed to target the students that were most vulnerable, especially in the midst of COVID. So that meant we had uh in-person, we had smaller class sizes in primary and we had fewer sites than typical. Uh, but I will say, and Gord did touch on this, um we're really glad that we're able to do that. Um, we were one of the only school districts across the province that was able to offer in-person classes to elementary students, uh which is a nice testament to all the staff that stepped up and pulled it all together. Uh, and just overall, um it's more of an anecdotal feel, but talking to the staff when we went around to the buildings last year, the elementary sites, just to, I think part of it had to do with COVID and all the other things that we've been, restrictions that we had in place. Having that opportunity to have those primary literacy students uh come into the building, smaller cohort sizes and feel like they accomplished something when there'd been so much, when they hadn't been able to be in person, was just such a high sense of accomplishment. So that was uh just made the work that much more rewarding for last year for everybody involved. So looking ahead to this year, uh registration opened on May the tenth, which uh any of you who have been around our programs before know that it's a, that's a lot later than, about a month later than we would typically have open registration. Um, and the big reason for that is we were waiting to see how the protocols uh were uh gonna play out uh where we were as a province, so we didn't want to start opening things and find that we had to pull back. So it's a little bit later, uh registration is open online at our uh website. And for this year, we also uh as a district team and then working with the DLT made the decision to only open registration to current SD thirty-five students and also to Langley residents. So that would mean if if somebody was a resident of Langley but not currently enrolled in our school district, they would also have the opportunity. And the biggest reason for that is we have a slightly limited capacity in some areas this year in particular. Um, we're trying to make sure we have enough staff to make sure we can cover our needs. But also, we're still not really sure what COVID's gonna look like as we get closer to the summer. So the decision was made that we didn't want to have to have that risk of community to community spread. Uh, we typically have a fairly wide open registration program, which is great. But having students come from various jurisdictions during the summer was felt like it wasn't the smartest plan with all the restrictions in place across the province right now. Uh, so as of May four twenty-four, so just yesterday, we were up to around seventeen-hundred registrations for elementary and middle years. And at our secondary programs, at the, and we'll touch on those in just a minute, we had about nine-hundred-and-thirty registrations so far. So our registration's still really healthy. Again, it's not maybe as strong as it would be in other years, but registration opened later and we also haven't opened it to outside's uh students as well, so that makes a lot of sense. Uh, the other thing this year for COVID protocols, it's a little bit different. In the past, secondary students were able to uh enroll in in two courses in summer, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Uh, this year, they're only able to take one class in the morning, which is felt it was a smarter move so we didn't have to go cleaning in between. They could be in their room in the morning and the custodians could clean in the afternoon and make sure everything was good to go. But also then we don't have all the crossover of students uh between the morning and the afternoon blocks, so that's. So that's a good decision, I think, moving ahead. So changes and additions, it's sort of an unusual change, but to even be able to get back to the diversity of programs that we're able to offer from grade one to 12 is really exciting. Last year, we did a wonderful job with what we were able to do, but summer school or summer sessions become a mainstay across our district. So being able to offer the diversity of programs geographically and also the age spread and not have to limit it to only certain grades is something I'm really thankful for. Across the district, geographic, as mentioned, it's been really a hallmark of our program that we haven't just focused on certain areas. Really, all of the parts of Langley, we try to make it as accessible as possible from the east to the west, north to the south. So that's been a real strength of our program. We have continued interest in expansion of exploration courses such as our computational thinking and coding, which has been always a hot seller, so to speak, for those middle year students. I think the courses are already full within about a week and a half of registration, which is similar as well for our maker explorations. And if anything, we could probably use some more teachers there because we have enough interest to do multiple courses. And the other exciting thing we're looking forward to this year is we've opened up a class called Woodworking for Girls. It was exciting when we had one of our teachers in the district approach us and say, you know, it's actually part of my master's program. She's a female shop teacher at Peter Ewart. And just really felt like having done a lot of research and talking about why girls don't take shop classes, then opportunity for girls to take classes without worrying about how they'd be judged or what people would think was something that she really valued. So again, that class filled up, the 20, 20 something spots that were in there filled up within about a week. So really excited to see how that goes this year. At secondary this year, we'll have two sites again. At Langley Secondary School, we're returning to there after all the renovations and constructions that's happened there. We're excited about that just because geographically, it makes a lot of sense for central Langley, south Langley. It also has a great bus access from the Aldego region on the 502 or 503 line. I can never remember those numbers, but so that gives us great access for Aldigo people as well. And also, we'll be returning to RE Mountain again last year, which was, we used last year as a site and we just feel like we'd like to try that again. A lot of staff felt it was a good venue. It's obviously a wonderful site and location, so we're looking forward to that as well. And at RE Mountain and LSS, an interesting side note for you, I mentioned blended learning that happened last year. We have the opportunity, obviously, to return to face-to-face classes like we always have up until last year. But we're also going to do a little bit of blended learning at there as well. So it'll be two days a week onsite at RE Mountain or LSS and also three days a week virtually. So very similar to what students have been doing in the blended model last year at summer, but also in the quarter system in some of those senior classes. The other thing I'll just touch on is the site-specific summer programs. It's been a nice strength for the schools that have chosen to take advantage of it. So this year, once again, we call them youth at risk programs because it's a lot of times trying to catch those students who might be at risk of disconnecting over the summer and also that transition from a feeder school into a secondary school or sometimes to a middle school as well. And so those opportunities are intended to increase engagement for those students in the summer to build relationships and connections for the school year ahead. So if you can envision at some sites when they're making that transition, if they have a hard time making transitions, if they're a student who struggled making positive connections with staff or just for a lot of different reasons, this gives those students an opportunity to connect with the staff before September rolls around. So they feel good about their summer, knowing what they're going to face when they get to their new school in the year ahead. And the other nice thing is this particular program is the only one that we have a lot of understanding with the union to allow the teachers and staff who will be working with those students to actually be hired specifically at that site. And that's a great opportunity. So it's not just random teachers are connecting with them this summer, they're actually connecting with the people they'll get to know in person at their site. So we're just wrapping it up here. Our elementary, middle years, grade eight and nine and ELL non-credit this year start on July the 5th, go to the 23rd, so that's three weeks. And our secondary, which is in-person and blended that I touched on, runs from July 5th to August 6th. If you look at the calendar at all, it's a really tight turnaround this year that really can't be avoided unfortunately. But with our last day, there's not a lot of gap between when summer session starts, but we've pulled it out before, so I think we'll be successful moving ahead as well. So that's the end of my presentation tonight and I'm glad to take any questions.
And thank you very much, Mr. Stare. I appreciate your time and all those will have trustees have their comments and questions. See, the first one is trustee Wilson. Let's go ahead, Marty.
Great. Thank you so much. I just, I've had a few parents ask me and I actually meant to email about this, just with the offerings for grade nines this year. And I've gone on the website and I see for the full credit in-person stuff for high school or secondary, there is a lot of 10, 11, 12. And then I see the middle years ones with the six, seven, eight, but I just haven't been able to find anything for grade nine. Did we have like a low amount of grade nines this year or is, can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, for sure. So grade eight and nine is sort of a crossover year going from our old model of elementary schools and then having secondary schools and then now we have the middle model. So we're slowly increasing our enrollment or our opportunities in the grade nines. I mean, it's not just a funding issue, but the way the ministry funds this is also different for grade eights and nines. We don't get the same amount of funding we do for grade 10, 11, and 12 programs. So that's part of it. We only get funded for up to 40, 40 plus hours of instructional time versus the 10, 11, and 12. We can get offered up to 80 hours of instruction, so we can offer a longer variety of courses. If we were to offer only, if we were trying to offer more, we would have to sort of cover those costs internally to make that work. So traditionally, we found good success offering grade eight and nine classes for, we used to call them the academic remedial classes. We're trying to focus on more of the exploratories. But really, this year, at the grade nine level, the only specific courses we have for grade nine would be the humanities nine, which is a mix of English and socials, or the science nine and the math nine. So you're right, there's not as many options there. And also, part of it's based on enrollment in the past. As the students moved up from the elementary levels, typically, some of those courses that we find a lot of success with the younger grades to explore different options haven't been as high enrolling. So we, and obviously, we don't want to be a drain on the district. So typically, when we've offered things, if they run, then we try and offer them next year or we try and see if we can feed things. But that's, it's partly financial, but it's also based on interest in the past. We sort of based our, what we want to try and offer based on what's run well in the past and we sometimes try new things. So it's something we could definitely look at for next year.
Great, thanks so much.
And thank you very much. How about Suzanne Perro? I think you have a question.
Thank you, Chair Ross. Mr. Stare, thank you so much for your work in this area over the years. You just have done a fabulous job building up this program. It's much appreciated and many of our families just benefit so much from it, especially our kiddos. I love this woodworking for girls program that you got, that we're firing up. That's really exciting and much needed. Being a person who's come from the trades programs and graduated through that, I, excuse me, I definitely see the value of it. I'm interested in understanding, how are we going about communicating out to potential participants in the program that this is out there so that we're connecting with these kiddos who might benefit from it?
Yeah, great question. I mean, for summer, I mean, we do rely on our brochures. Once the registration opens, we rely on people signing up. This year, obviously, like always, we rely on our various schools being able to get a communication out to their various communities. And part of it is, I mean, we have only so much space and only so many staff who are interested in working summer. That's the big piece. Partly also this year with it being a late registration, waiting to see what we could offer, the summer or the woodworking for girls was actually one that sort of came in near the end of, just when we were about to put things out. This is a great idea, let's see if we can make it work. So we didn't really get a chance to do a lot of advertising, but even without the advertising, like I say, it filled up within a week. So it's something I think we could look at for the future, but I mean, it's just, a lot of the times, it has to do with limitations of what staff who are interested in working this summer and especially in some of the key areas, like some of the trades, there's only so many shop slash tech teachers in the district. We find, to be honest, we find the same thing sometimes for our specific secondary courses, like sometimes the seniors physics, senior chemistry, senior math. There's, you know, because that's a fairly specific skillset that's needed and it's not always possible to find enough staff to staff even more programs than we might be able to.
And thank you. I have a question if there's not anyone else that would like to speak. You know, you've done outstanding. I always find amazing that you get thousands of people interested in summer school and you're already at roughly 2,700. To give some context, where would you be at the end? What's your gut feeling you'll be at the end come July 5th? How many kids do you think?
Yeah, great question. I mean, typically, we're around 4,000 registrations. I mean, one of our schools is already full, one of our elementaries, so like we can't have any more space there because of the class base. I'm sort of thinking we'll probably end up around 32, 3,400. That's my guess. So that's across all programs.
And you've put all those parameters around it. You're still going to get those numbers. That's very impressive.
Yeah, and we, I mean, like I say, sometimes we'd like to add more, but at particular sites, we obviously only have so many spots available and we also have so many teachers. So, yeah, I mean, 4,000 was sort of our sweet spot for a number of years. We were just sort of incremental gains. So I'd be really happy this year, given COVID and everything that's gone on this year. If we can get to 32, 3,400, that would be fantastic in my mind, so.
And I agree as well. Well, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. And so can I have, the Board of Education receives the report on summer session 2021 for information as presented, moved by?
Moved.
And seconded by Shelley Coburn. Thank you very much. All those in favor, trustees? Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. And thank you. Now, on to the Secretary of Treasuries report, 7.1, the 2021-2022 Annual Budget Bylaw, first and second reading. Secretary of Treasury, Brian Azelli, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Ross. Before I start tonight, I want to recognize the hard work of the Assistant Secretary of Treasury, Shin Chen and his finance team for the work that they've done preparing the budget this year in a very challenging time with all the things that are going on with COVID and definitely not a normal budget. So thanks to him and his team and my appreciation to all of them for the work that they've put into getting us to this point tonight. Just to start off, just a reminder to the board that for the school act, we are required to have an annual budget that is submitted by June 30th of each year. And part of that act requires that we need to do it in the format that is specified by the minister, which since 2012 has been in the PSAB format. The PSAB format was a change in 2012 that made us put our budgets in a consolidated format of all our funds. So when you're looking at the template, the statements are the ones that are a combination of all the various funds. The Schedule twos are our operating funds, which are the day-to-day operations of the districts where we'll spend most of our time tonight. The Schedule threes are the special purpose funds and the Schedule fours are the capital funds. Budget assumptions that we've shared with trustees over the last couple finances and facilities, just some ideas at high level before we get into some of the detail. We've projected a very conservative growth this year of 118.125 FTE. That was because of the impact that we had on COVID last year and the uncertainty of what COVID would mean for this fall. We've decided to go with very conservative projections. Our ISP program has taken a sizable hit due to COVID. Last year's budget was 700. The year before was about 1,000 students. We're actually projecting to decline further at 625 students because they haven't been able to recruit and the cohorts that have graduated out have had a big impact on that. We do hope that that is a very conservative number, but that's where we wanted to start our budget assumption on. Luckily, before COVID hit, we had actually approved a price increase in the ISP program for this year of $1,000 from 14.5 to 15.5. So that's reflective now in a budget. Ron has just talked about our summer programs. We put in a plan of 70% of our COVID numbers before the COVID, two years ago. We've implemented all the benefit changes. Dental and extended health due to COVID have remained fairly flat as people haven't been taking advantage of those. It's obviously less people are getting out. Work safe and CPP increases have been reflected. Also reflected, the 2% collective increases for the collective agreements and increments for teachers. We've put in $550,000 for estimated admin and exempt raises. We put the full year impact of late start positions. We've removed one-time items. And of course, this year, we are opening the new elementary school, Donaghy Road Elementary, which comes with cost of starting up a school and staffing it. We've been growing the enrollment over years, but now we have a large influx of cost due to the school opening in one year. So this slide, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but I want to give you an idea of what the total revenue for the district looks like. You can see that it's broken down by the various funds. So the revenue projected for the 21-22 school year is $313 million. Most of that, as you can see, 281 of that is the plans that would receive funding from the Ministry of Education with the next largest piece being the tuition mainly made up of our international program. On the expense side, you can see our expenses at just over 271 million with the bulk of that being an instruction of $220 million. This slide is the bylaw amount that we'll be asking the trustees to approve tonight. So that bylaw will be 274.8 million dollars for this year. And you can see that broken down by fund. And I will spend some time going through the various funds and providing more detail. Like I mentioned, we'll spend most of our time with our operating funds. It's the largest piece of our budget, but also the ones that are used to run the majority of our district. I do have further slides on the operating grant and the tuition, so I won't address those right now. The other revenue items are changes that are due to COVID, leases and rentals. We've put in some funding, assuming that we will be able to do some rentals of our building. That's not back to the levels that we had, obviously, prior to COVID, but as we start to see things loosening up, we've put some funds in there. Our investment income has deteriorated hugely due to the rates that we can now get on our funds due to the financial state of the world with COVID. That number was well over a million dollars a year ago and now it's down to $432,000 projected for the 21-22 school year. Before I get into showing the operating grants, I wanted to show the kind of the rate increases that we receive on a per-student basis from the ministry. You can see, most of those have gone up about 4.3%. Those are reflective of the funds that has been rolled into the per-people amounts for the collective agreements for the labor settlements. And the big increase is mainly due to the fact that for the teachers, it's three years of raises rolled into one rate increase in these numbers. And you can see how they've split that across the board. Once again, that they've used that to prop up some of the other funding levels with, you can see the special ed, ELL and Indigenous also have increased at the same rate as the basic allocation for students. Apologize for all the information on the slide. It's a little small. I'm not going to definitely go through all of it, but wanted to give you an idea of where our operating grant bulk of the funds come from. You can see total of increase of $10.7 million. We've broken that down by enrollment changes and also rate changes. Rate changes is being $8.5 million, which was once again, the funding of the teacher agreement and the QP agreements, so teachers being a three-year funding. And then the district is growing 2.2 million due to enrollment. And you can see most of that funding is coming from the base allocations, but also our unique supplements for special ed and level one, two, and three being other larger amounts for the district. The rest of our operating grant, you can see the same $10.7 million and all the other grants that we've received from the ministry. The graduate adults has seen negative impacts from the COVID program. That funding always comes later as we get funded based on progression through the course. So some of the impacts of this year will be received financially in the next school year. The teacher labor settlement funding, last year, that was done in a special grant that is now rolled into the per-people amount and which is part of the 4.3% increases a couple slides ago. We're down $475,000. It was a one-time funding as part of the teacher agreement for our mentorship funds. You'll see the revenue go down, but you will also see the corresponding expenses that went down. It was a one-time funding that was then spent on mentorships. Our international program, as mentioned, has declined again, another 75 students, so just under $1.1 million impact. There's $390,000 in cancellation. There's three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in cancellations that was a part of our revenue due to the policy on cancellations over the last school year. The thousand-dollar increase, as we mentioned earlier, the rate increase for the international program offsets some of those shortfalls in our numbers with the six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in fee increases. On the expense side, I will go through slides for each of these to provide a little more details, but you can see kind of where we are spending our funds. We are about ninety percent in salary and benefits of our total budget. So on the teacher side, the big one being the teacher increase cost, one point nine million dollars for this upcoming school year. We, at this point in time, usually put a contingency for our average teacher cost, so that we are sure that we cover off on our teacher cost, and then we evaluate that in the fall and see if that's money that we can use for other purposes. We have the impact of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand on late starts that were throughout the current school year. Due to the growth at elementary, there are, and middle, there are ten divisions that have increased in those areas. We've also put in a three-division contingency for elementary and middle for changes in enrollment that could possibly impact divisions at elementary and middle. We normally do that at this point in time. Secondary, on the other hand, had a decrease. With secondary, we didn't adjust their budgets this year with the decline in international and the decline in regular enrollment and with the additional decline in ISP, and no growth really forecasted in secondary, there was some reduction in secondary staffing. There was some resupply coming back up, we've added some funds for teachers, and we've also added a halftime psychologist for the district wellness team. So for our principals and vice principals, we have a wage increase, three hundred and thirty thousand. We've added a vice principal at Alder Grove Secondary. And then there's a small amount there for summer session and a reduction in a vice principal in our international program due to the decline in the enrollment in that program. On the education assistance, the largest change there is the wage increases. Some changes in ISP assistant hours at secondary due to the lower numbers. There's an increase in Aboriginal support positions. That was awfully, you'll see an offset of some of that on the supply side, where there was supply spent this year in supporting the families that are now going to be used in staffing positions in that program, and then restoring the budget for the SEA time in the summer session program. On the support staff side, the largest piece there is the wage increases and a couple other items on the setup of Donna Gabriel with clerical staff and custodial to clean that building, as well as the full year impact on some vacancies that were in maintenance that we didn't have in the budget for September, for our last year. On the other professionals, we have wage increase, trustee increases, and a full year impact of a information technology position that started late in the year. Substitutes, we always compare substitutes to the previous year's preliminary budget because when we do the amended budget, it always takes into account vacancies that are known at that point in time. So you can see that there's not much change in the budget for the substitutes. This year was a horrible benchmark year for substitutes, so we've pretty much left the budget alone, and we'll have to evaluate that one as we get into the fall budget to see what the trends are once we start coming out of the COVID, obviously. The supplies, that's where the most of the changes have happened. On the international programs, there's a few items. The commissions unfortunately have increased because with more students leaving, it means new students coming in, which means higher commissions to agents to bring those students in. We've also restored the international travel budgets in hopes that that'll be happening in the near future, that we can get out there and start doing the recruiting in person to start that regrowth of that program. I mentioned the mentorship funds, you can see here, here's the expense coming out of the budget. With the growth of the district and the growth of use of technology, there's a slight increase in licensing for RIT. With less students, we have lower medical costs for the international students. We've started a lot of process improvement initiatives, so first ones we did this year was the HR onboarding, and we've now have a hundred and seventy thousand there for the next phases of digitization and streamlining processes for the district. We did this seismic project definition report for Peter Urt, that was a cost for last year. Our leases for our technology have, some of them have come up and are being renewed as we've started just buying technology instead of leasing them. The cost of the trustee by-election, seventy-five thousand dollars is coming out, and then some other one-time costs. Also assuming that since we're getting back to more normal, we've included the chargeouts for field trips that we charged to schools. The Indigenous education has reduced their supply budgets by a hundred and forty thousand, some of that was staffing, some of that was funds that were needed to be spent from the previous year. We had last year about two hundred and ten thousand dollars of items that were delivered, not delivered in time for the school year prior in June, that we had restricted surplus for, that when they came in this fall, we had to pay for those. That number is probably going to grow this year when we do our financial statements this year, because there's a lot of things that are delayed in every area of procurement right now. About four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in supply budgets at schools, and that's normal. We allow schools to, in the fall, budget their surplus amounts from the previous year, so that comes out in the preliminary budget, and once we know what their carryforward amounts are, will be added in the fall budget. And then we put in an amount for fifty thousand dollars for explorations at Betty Gilbert. So some of the funds that we use from operating on our capital, so the equipment budget for technology is just over eight hundred thousand dollars. We've, some of the schools due to the growth at elementary have required adding in divisions of places that they didn't have divisions before. So there's a requirement for furniture for those divisions, so put in some furniture. Planning to redo the gym floor at Stafford, and also two hundred thousand dollars as the continuing process to continue to update the aging white fleet for our maintenance vehicles. So you put all that together, and the total revenue expenses leaves the district with a planned budget of three point three million dollars for the twenty-one, twenty-two years compared to a planned budget of five million dollars for this current fiscal year. Districts are allowed to have deficit budgets as long as they have accumulated surplus to fund those deficits for the year, which the district does. This slide here shows you kind of how we are planning to do that, and the trustees will have to put forward a motion at the June meeting to restrict these funds to be used to balance the preliminary budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So we had to put aside eight hundred and twelve thousand for the appropriate future budgets. If trustees recall, prior to COVID, the twenty-one, twenty-two was the last planned deficit year, with the district to be less than a million dollars, which the eight hundred thousand dollars would have helped us to balance, but COVID has set us back a little bit, but we will still be able to weather the storm. Taking some funds from the infrastructure replacement, that's the gym floor, and some work, the exploration funds for Betty Gilbert, and there'll be more coming to the board on some further plans for the Alder Grove region. And the rest is the two point, just under two point four million dollars, will come from what's left of the COVID contingency that we had set up, leaving us with six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars left to deal with any unforeseen items that happen in September with COVID, with a possible custodial or those kind of things that we need based on the parameters that we are given when the new requirements are coming from the ministry. So that is how staff propose we balance the three point three million dollar deficit. Special purpose funds, those are funds that are defined as a liability under PSAB, meaning that if the funds aren't used for a targeted purpose, that they need to be repaid. So I just have a couple of slides on those. You can see these are the total special purpose funds that the district has. Most of the first bunch are just small amount changes, and that's usually just the carryfor from the previous year that we put into the amended budget. There's an amount for classroom enhancement, but I have a special slide for that that I'll go through. There's some one-time grants, obviously, at the bottom there, the two biggest one-time grants being the one point six million for the Provincial Safe Return to School Grant and the seven point nine in the Federal Safe Return to School Fund. Those were amounts that we had received this year to deal with the COVID and the protocols and the requirements to be able to keep our schools open. And as of today, there are no commitments from either level of government funding levels as of this point in time. So we've built this plan based on a normal September startup. CEF funding, it's the restored language funding that we have for the teachers' collective agreement that happened a few years back. What they do for the preliminary budget on the teacher side is they fund ninety percent of the previous year's FTE, so that's why you can see a change in the decline in the teachers' cost. They don't fund remedy until the fall, once they know what the estimate is from district, so we will submit that in the fall, and those funds will then appear in the December recalc amount, and then the overhead amount is flat to what we received the last two years. So next steps, tonight, we will proceed hopefully with the first and second readings of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. The budget open house that we normally do obviously is not possible under the current COVID restrictions, so we'll be doing similar to last year where we have a budget virtual open house, which will start tomorrow until the thirty-first, where this PowerPoint will be on there, and there will be a form for people to fill out questions or comments that will be sent to the district, and then we will come back with the third and final reading of the budget on the June fifteenth meeting, where we would have to then, as mentioned, have a motion as well for the accumulated surplus to fund the planned twenty-one, twenty-two deficit budget. Just for a reminder, this is the bylaw that'll be before you tonight for the first two readings of the two hundred and seventy-four point eight million dollars. And with that, I will hand it back to Chair Ross and answer any questions.
Thank you, Secretary of Treasury Isely, and I do have some questions. Trustee Charlie Fox is first up, followed by Suzanne Perro, and then lastly, David Todd, so far. Go ahead, David, no, pardon me, Charlie Fox, it's up to you.
Thank you very much, Chair Ross, and directed through you to Mr. Isely, Secretary of Treasury. First off, I just have to commend you and your staff for the absolutely tremendous job you have done, and that's also, that's your staff plus, I'm sure, senior administration in terms of planning and in terms of preparing this documentation and thinking about the context of the needs in this school district. I, having gone through this, obviously, at committee and now publicly, I think you've done a tremendous job of not only trying to meet the needs of student learners, but meet the needs of schools across the district in a variety of different ways. A couple of points, and you did answer one very close to the end of your presentation. I'm a little disappointed in the fact that the two levels of government, the provincial and federal, have actually, have made no indication that there may be monies to continue some of the benefits that we did see in our COVID applications in school. I'm thinking one in particular, if we look at elementary schools now, we've completely changed the custodial aspects of how elementary schools operate, and I don't want to see us go back to where we once were. I want to see that continue. That's a costly addition to our budget, which has not been recognized. I'm just wondering if there's been any correspondence either from our district to the provincial or federal government, or vice versa, that we know of, that there may be a hint of that continuing.
There hasn't been any acknowledge, well, I shouldn't say acknowledgement, there hasn't been no commitment of funds coming to the district. There has been a commitment that further protocol guidance will be coming hopefully before the end of the school year. It is our hope that some of that will come with funding that is required to do these sort of things. I know the district leadership team recognizes that even if we are back to a hundred percent normal, whatever that looks like in the fall, there probably needs to be some sort of transition. That's why we did want to make sure that we had some funds left in that COVID fund so that we could deal with some of these things on, you know, custodial. We would obviously not be able to afford the twenty-four custodians that we hired this year under the provincial and federal funds, but I find it hard to believe that we would go from, you know, twenty-four to zero. So we're hoping to get more information, and hopefully it does come with funding, but that's why we did want to leave some funds there so that the district, if need be, had some leeway to make those kind of calls.
That's excellent, and I hope that, I hope that they do see through that. I think we have a new normal in terms of our expectations by parents, by staff, and by students about cleanliness and so on and so forth. Couple of other things just quickly to pick out, nice to see some money going to Betty Gilbert for explorations and seeing that part of the budget. I love the term, hopefully, more back to normal with field trips. We know our students have been somewhat limited in that opportunity over the last while, and it would be great to get them back out into our community and our surrounding communities to enjoy the amenities, not only as enjoyment purposes, but more for learning purposes. And lastly, the emphasis on computer equipment and technology to support schools, money in the budget for that, always leading-edge stuff, and we need to continue our focus on that to prepare our students for the next step in life. So thank you to your staff, you, your staff, senior management. I think this is an excellent budget, and it certainly is a rebound from COVID. Well done.
If you don't mind, Chair Ross, I would like to touch on something that Trustee Fox mentioned earlier. This was a lot of work for staff, but it was a lot of work for the system. I've been incredibly proud to be part of the system. I've been with this district since two thousand twelve, these last two budgets were the hardest ones yet, and there was no complaining by administration and senior staff, everyone did what they had to do, and I couldn't be prouder of the system and how it's come together. These have not been easy years budget-wise, and people have done some incredible work and some hard work, and they've done it, not liking it, obviously, none of us like it, but no one has complained. And it's just a reflection of the system that I get to work.
I think that speaks volumes to the quality of people we have working as a unit for students in our district, across the district, across different employee groups. Thank you.
You're here. Thank you, Trustee Fox. Over to Trustee Suzanne Perro, please. Your question.
Suzanne, Trustee Suzanne Perro, not Susan, sorry. It's okay, it's not really funny.
A mistake.
Thank you, Trustee Fox, for your comments and your insights, they're very important ones and very much on point with my heart, that's for sure. And so I also extend my great appreciation to you, Brian, and our staff and our administrators in the district for the incredible work and the heavy lifting that's been going on over this last period of time we've been walking through. It's definitely a difficult, difficult challenge to accomplish what we've had to do. I have one quick question. When we're looking at the special purpose fund, there was a student capacity needs of five, was it five thousand, five hundred thousand, five thousand? The slide went too quick for me, I was just wondering if you can explain to me, what does that encompass on that slide in terms of how it would be used or not used?
So that fund was set up as a restricted fund by the board in the past to deal with growth in the district for when we need to be putting portables onto sites, so that we have those funds. when needed. We don't like, we have the contingency to put in divisions, but if you happen to have a place that is near capacity or at capacity and students arrive that we don't have space for, we need the funds to be able to put in the portables. Portables cost us $150,000 to $180,000 or even higher, depending on where they have to go and what the portable availability is. So that's basically probably about two and a half, three portables.
Thank you very much. Onto Trustee David Todd, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and through the chair to Secretary Treasurer. One, I really want to once again echo similar comments about your responsible, respectful, and realistic financial stewardship for our district over the last number of years. You and your team, and it is a team, has done an incredible job. And, you know, if you look at this year, districts around the province, some of them are in, you know, a difficult situation. And they're looking at cuts going into the fall and, you know, through your wisdom and your budgeting, where you aren't facing some of those difficult, difficult choices. So well done and kudos to you guys. It's not ironic, but what Trustee Perro was, her question, you kind of answered my question. So I'm not necessarily going to, because I was concerned about portables and relocations. I know that we are opening a brand new school in Willoughby, and there may be, and you've reserved a certain amount for extra divisions. But I guess my concern is, do you have any concerns? And, you know, kind of last minute, if there's an exceeding number of growth, and most of our growth is in Willoughby. Right now, you're predicting 120 students, but say, what if that number is up to, to like double that? Or anything like that, because I know the one thing that's still selling is real estate. And any concerns and are we in a good place? And you said there's a half a million dollars there just in case, but are we going to be able to respond with portables, you know, if we need to?
I think this year we're in pretty good shape with the opening of Donna Gabriel. We've left the portables at places like Lynn Fryps and Willoughby. So there is extra space in those schools that were used last year that are not used this year. So I think on the slope, we have plenty of space. My biggest concern would be if we had to put a portable down, getting a portable, because everything right now is has long lead times. So I think we're in pretty good shape in most places. I think Nickelmeckel may be the one that we're keeping an eye on, but there is some room in surrounding schools around it that we feel that we can make it through this year. But I think that'll be the one that we'll be looking at shortly of putting portables on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Todd. Over to Trustee Marty Wilson, please.
Great, thank you, and I want to thank you all for your hard work. I don't envy you. Wow, it's a huge task and COVID has just thrown an enormous wrench into things. So way to go for getting all of it done and coming in where we finished. I'm very thankful for that. I noticed you said nobody complained. I feel like I'm going to be the complainer now. Just call me complainer. So I was hoping after conversations from the past that I would see some technology for support staff and perhaps a bit more funding for school counselors, school psychologists. I did see the Point 50, but I think we know the impacts of COVID on mental health are going to, they're huge now and they're going to continue, I think, to be enormous. So it'd be nice if we front loaded for those types of things. Other than that, I really think we need to be prepared as a board that if the provincial and federal governments do not kick in some extra funding for a safe return to school for next September, that we need to advocate hard to the ministry. I will be willing to put a motion forward next meeting after we wait and see if they come through with anything. Because we cannot just go back to zero and not have daytime custodians. We've realized the importance of cleanliness in the schools, and I just think we need to do everything we can as a board to have the other levels of government put some money towards our students and their safety. And it's safety for everybody. So that's all I've really got to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Shelley Coburn, I do see your name in the chat. I'm not sure if that's a, you don't have a question or comment? Okay. So thank you. I have one comment if I could, and this goes back to Trustee Todd's comment about other school districts and the challenges they're having with their budget. Can you give some context for Langley as to why we're not in the same boat as other districts? And the second question is, you talked about lead times for purchasing large items and how, you know, the world has changed. Could you just give us some context just to the public that might be listening in? They might give some understanding what that really means.
Sure. This district has a deficit structure, which is evident by our budget that is proposed tonight. This, the leadership team in this board have worked over the last two years to work our way out of that deficit structure. And we were on track, I think I mentioned earlier, that this would have been our last deficit budget. And it would have been sub $1 million as to how we are trending if we hadn't had the impact of COVID. So I think this district made a wise choice a couple of years back to do that. I think if we hadn't done that, we would be in similar boats to some of those other districts that have larger deficit structures, which they've always been able to fund out of surplus. But when something like a COVID comes along and you lose your international program and all kinds of other revenues and the, you know, the growth that most districts count on that are doing these things don't materialize, it gets really hard to balance the budget. So I think our proactive approach of trying to get to a balanced budget and then using one-time funds on one-time items is why we're in a fairly decent situation right now. On the procurement side of things, everything seems to have some component that is delayed right now, and it's across the board. In our amended budget, we had some white fleet purchases. And so we basically went one day where I was told by purchasing, if we place the order in by tomorrow, it'll be here in five weeks. We placed it that next morning, only to find out that we're lucky to get them in July, and that was in January. So that gives you an idea of how quickly the lead times change. And even when you're told things are arriving in a certain period of time, something on it, and it's usually some stupid component that no one thought of, but delays it. And it's happening in technology, fleet, portables. It's pretty much across the board in a lot of large procurement items. We've actually been very lucky with the tech that we've done. Our director of IT has done a phenomenal job of being able to find tech, and most of the tech orders will arrive. But some of the things like fleet, and I know some districts haven't been as lucky as we have.
Thank you very much. And I have this one final classic question. Dark clouds on the horizon. What are you concerned about? What keeps you awake at nights?
Well, I think it's the unknown of the startup at fall. I think a few of you have mentioned it, you know, what are the parameters that we're going to be needing to operate in our schools with? Is there going to be any funding for those kind of things? What are enrollment numbers going to be like? What are our international student numbers? Those are the things that I worry about. There's a lot of unknown. There's probably less unknowns than last year, but there's still a lot of unknowns. And, you know, when you're talking the dollar amounts that we're talking about on some of those items, that's what would keep me up at night.
Thank you for your presentation and your staff's hard work on it as well. I wanted to mention that. So I'd like to have a mover and a seconder that the school district number 35 Langley, 2021, 2022 annual budget bylaw on the amount of 274 million, 810,378 dollars be given first reading here in Langley today. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by David Todd, Charlie Fox is seconded. Thank you very much.
Okay, Suzanne, you can do it.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, thank you. It's passed unanimously. Thank you. And we've got one more tonight as well, exactly the same. I need a mover that the school district number 35 Langley, 2021, 2022 annual budget bylaw on the amount of 274,810, 274 million, 810,378 dollars be given second reading here in Langley today. Can I have a mover? Shelley Coburn, and seconded by Suzanne Perro. Thank you. And all those in favor? And it is unanimous as well. Okay, thank you very much. Very good. Comes to the end of our regular meeting. We're moving on to new business, 8.1. We have proposed motion. So this is coming from a trustee Marty Wilson. Would you like to read it out and see if you can get a seconder?
Yes.
Oh, okay, we have to do a motion to extend the meeting first of all. I'm sorry, it is after nine o'clock-ish. So can I have a motion to extend this meeting? Okay, for 20 minutes, it's Shelley Coburn is mover, seconded by Tony Ward. Thank you very much. And now over to you, Marty. Would you like to move your motion and see if this is seconded?
Sure, but we got a vote on extending the meeting.
Oh. Thank you very much. Everyone's so patient. Another mistake. I must be learning. Okay, can I have a mover? We got a mover and a seconder. Can we have all in favor, please, of another 20 minutes? Thank you, and it is unanimous as well. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Marty.
Okay, so yeah, I proposed a motion and gave notice of motion. And after speaking with several colleagues, I will spare the board going through this motion, and so I withdraw my motion.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. Okay, so that moves us on to trustee comments, and it's opportunity for trustees. Do you have a question, David Todd?
Yes, point of order. I believe there was a motion that was supposed to be read about pedestrian safety on the Snake Hill. I submitted it to Secretary Treasurer.
You know, I see it. It was on a separate sheet of paper. I'm sorry. Yes, it is. There's a separate proposed motion to be brought by trustee Todd. It's right in front of me. I've got it here. Would you like to move it and then we'll find a seconder for it?
Sure. Okay, so be it resolved, the Langley School Board requests the township of Langley consider pedestrian safety concerns, especially school age pedestrians, and take appropriate actions and measures in the Snake Hill area of the township. It's within the DW Poppy catchment.
Okay, moved by trustee Todd. Thank you very much.
Trustee Perro is gonna second.
Trustee Perro is seconding it, okay. Thank you very much. Is there, is there any comments, questions about this? Would you like to speak further about this, trustee Todd?
Yeah, so it came up. It was apparent concern. We had, when we redid some of the bus routes in the DW Poppy area, there was apparent concern that there was just not a safe pickup and drop off. And it's, I haven't been there myself, but I know that it's a hill, there's obstructed views. And so there was concern and actually came forward and staff that said they spoke to township and they believe that in order for them to action this, we do need a motion. We work from motions, and so that's why it's coming forward to tonight's meeting.
Thank you, and I think I know the location and probably others do as well. Looks like there's a number of people that want to speak to this, so. Any other comments? Okay, I see Tony Ward and then Charlie Fox. Go ahead, Tony.
Okay, thank you, Chair Ross and trustee Todd. I would agree in principle here, having worked on the roads for years and years, and Snake Hill is obviously challenging. Although I wasn't a student traveling, I do know, I do know the issue. So although I'm fully in agreement of that, my question is with respect to the appropriateness of motions as it is to kind of just show our support, to kind of urge the township one way or the other as a united board. I get the idea, but I remember when I first came on as a trustee, it was like, we're not just here to make motions to show something, these are more actionable items that we can take place. I don't know how to articulate it exactly. I love, I do support the idea, but that's some of my thinking.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments, trustee Ward. I know that Secretary Treasurer Isley has some comments that he'd like to share with the board at this time. Go ahead.
Yeah, so superintendent and I have met with township staff and about the issue, and their request was that if this was an issue, that a motion come from the board.
So this is a request from the township of Langley. That's fabulous. Okay, thank you very much. I think we've got some other speakers to this. Trustee Fox, I think you're next on my list. My apologies. I missed you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Ross, for the opportunity. This, this came up and it's, unfortunately, it's a bit of a challenge because of COVID as well, because we had to reduce our bus, busing budget prior to my time on the board. But it did come up during the election, by-election, pardon me, as being an issue of safety for our students. And certainly with our tight budget, increasing busing is just not an option at this particular point in time. So we need to look at other alternatives. And having driven that hill many, many times in my years of living in Langley, I know it well, and I do believe that there is opportunity for some safety improvements. And I think this is a, this motion's putting it forth, moving it on to the township to see what they can support us in doing is very prudent. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would have to say I agree completely. Trustee Marty Wilson, I think your name is on there next for a comment.
Great, yeah. I guess I'd like to start by saying I had no idea this motion was coming, and I don't know if it came in an email. I just tried to check my email quickly or if I somehow missed it. But if Secretary Treasurer was discussing this with township and obviously some of you were told about it to make the motion. So I'd just like in the future, if we could have some sort of heads up that this is coming, because I would have liked to prepare for the motion. So again, no surprises is always a great motto to go by. So as far as the Snake Hill, yes, I have heard from several parents myself. I understand that busing is a budgetary item, and I believe that we do need to do our due diligence and that we can change our busing policy to shorten walk limits if there are safety concerns. I think that it wouldn't be a huge budgetary issue, and I have brought it forward before and it was supposed to be referred to somewhere, but I don't think that has happened. So I would like to see that happen as well, because I think that shortening walk limits where safety is a factor can really decrease these issues. As far as the township asking us to make this motion, I, yeah, like I said, I wish I would have known that, because it did come up through the by-election. I watched the parents do a walk on it and post the video. It's always been an unsafe situation. It's been going on for a long time. So I hope that this helps us address not only that safety concern, but that there are some things we could do as a district with our own busing to help these safety concerns. So hopefully those will be coming forward very soon.
And thank you very much. Okay. Still more time. We haven't quite used all our 20 minutes up yet, so. Oh, I know we got trustee comments still, so did someone else want to speak? I see trustee Coburn, did you want to speak on a specific issue or should? Okay, well, I think we'll call the question on it then. So all those in favor of the motion, be resolved that the Langley School Board requests the township of Langley consider pedestrian safety concerns, especially school age pedestrians, and take appropriate actions slash measures in the Snake Hill area of the township. Moved by, all those in favor? Yep, there we go. Yes, unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Trustee comments, thank you. Shelley Coburn, why don't you start out? Because you are, you always save yourself for the last, so I think we should start out with you. No? Okay, then, you're on mute, so I'll go to.
You have a chair, so it's your, it's your call, Chair.
It's my call? Well, I, I think I'd like to start with you, so there you go.
Well, I think I'll remember that for always, so. So thank you, Chair. I did save all of my comments this meeting because I do have something a little lengthier, so I wanted to just condense my time. So I hope everyone bears with me. So I don't have to tell anyone how tremendously difficult and challenging this past 14 months have been on our children, our families, and our staff. In addition to the regular challenges that staff face in a typical year, people in public education have had to manage the complexities of a pandemic. Our people were ordered to work. This means that all our sites are open. This means that all our sites are open and compliant, which has been an extremely complex undertaking for our people. And on top of this, they are still responsible for the work as directed by the ministry and by the board. And tonight I want to highlight this work. I'm not sure if people notice, but in our consent agenda, there is an item four point three point two point one, AP three hundred. I'm going to cry. Opiate overdose response. And the purpose of this new administrative procedure is to clarify the response to a potential opiate overdose at district's goal sites. I won't go over the details of the entire procedure. This is the point. The point is tonight is to applaud the hard work of this district. And when I say hard work, I mean it. When I presented this to the district, the district staff several years ago, they said, this is going to be difficult, trustee Coburn. And I said, I know. But I knew it could be done and I believed if a district could figure it out, that it would be ours. And now that it is done, I want the district to know how proud of yourselves you need to be. Not only have you done this practical work to address this crisis, what you have done to challenge the stigma by shifting the conversation away from the notion of only some families, some students and some schools need this, to one that says addictions and overdose does not discriminate. We need this everywhere. To say I am proud of this district and your work is an understatement. You are the best of the best in the province. These things take dedication, commitment and courage and not just for staff, but for my colleagues at the table. Supporting this from whatever point in this process you've entered, many boards would have avoided this like at all costs. But you did not and I want my colleagues to be proud of this district, this work and themselves. This overdose procedure sets this district apart from many. And of all the work I have ever been involved with, this work is the work that means the most. And I will finish tonight with something I do not typically do, which is to single out an SD thirty-five staff individually and publicly. But this instance for me merits the public recognition and appreciation. So I would like to finish my comments by acknowledging and recognizing the work of Assistant Superintendent Mal Gil for his work on this procedure. And beyond this, I would like to personally thank you for not backing down. This means everything to me. Thank you very much and to my colleagues, thank you and have a wonderful night.
Thank you trustee Coburn. And move on to, we'll go alphabetical today. How about Charlie Fox next?
Thank you very much Chair Ross. Just to echo trustee Coburn, we are fortunate, I feel, believe as a board of school trustees to have a very finely tuned senior administrative staff. We saw that tonight with our budget presentation. We saw that tonight with the emphasis on the presentation on reconciliation and all the work that's being done there. Tremendous work, unique work in a lot of instances to not, to our district and unique in the province in many, many ways. So you know, I haven't been on this board a long time, but I've certainly got to be gratified with the work that's been done. And it's good to see trustees get their items brought forward. And excellent, thank you very much to all the trustees for the work they've done and kudos to the staff. It's nice to see that we've unique and not having the complaints that other districts do with respect to deficits and significant cuts in learning programs. Thank you.
Here, here. Thank you very much Charlie Fox. And over to Ms. Perro, Suzanne Perro, please.
Well, I just had to giggle because trustee Wilson indicated she doesn't like alphabetical order and I thought, wow, for the first time, I'm not last. I grew up being last all the time. I was giggling, so forgive me. I was like, oh, that was really funny. I too echo trustee Coburn, trustee Fox's thought processes and it sounds quite redundant and I certainly don't want to minimize their hearts and tensions, but we definitely got an exceptional leadership in these areas. And we saw this in this last quarter of the year between motion fifteen going to the BCSTA and prior to that, us evaluating our district and looking at the seclusion isolation rooms and having the courage to talk about that and look at that and examine it into what trustee Coburn's motion was regarding the whole point and our budget. And on top of that, COVID and any other changes that the ebb and flow we go through. So my heartfelt appreciation to each and every one of you. And I thank you for your heart and passion for our students and keeping us focused at student centered first. That's really important. I thank each of my board members for, for your strength and courage pushing through some of the hard discussions and partnering up with me and letting me partner up with you at the table and do this journey so that we can do this and help our district to be that, that lighthouse that we have been told we once were and to be the best board ever. And that being said, I thank you and good night.
Appreciate your comments Suzanne. Over to, I guess it's trustee Todd right now.
Wow, I used to be last in class all the time, too. Again, I want to, you know, it seems like everybody's saying it, but lovely things happen in Langley and they really, really do. And who knew that we could continue to do these magical things during a pandemic? Like who knew? And you know, even tonight, the talk about summer session and how it's recovering and we made some wise choices before, you know, we made wise choices when we built RE Mountain. We overbuilt it. We, you know, it's good counsel and we have good staff. And that's the bottom line. And we have heroes every day going to work in our district. Every day there's heroes going to work. And you know, I know trustee Coburn has said that I want to acknowledge each and every one of them because they are heroes.
Wilson, thank you.
That said, there's today, or I believe March twenty-fifth or March twenty-first, it is Child Care Provider Appreciation Day. And to change gears a little bit, they are really important. They're providing high-quality culturally relevant care and learning options for kids before they come to our schools. And hats off to them. Thank you for the work they do each and every day. And good night.
Thank you trustee Todd. Your comments are always from the heart and I appreciate them very much. Next we have trustee Ward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to try to keep it short, but I am actually just looking forward to COVID opening up and seeing all your bright and shiny faces up in close and in personal or in person. And maybe even extending, I don't know, a handshake or something or a COVID-friendly hug. But I'm looking forward to that. Great presentations by staff. Summer school thing is fabulous. And as trustee Perro mentioned, just some of those, the woodworking for girls. I mean, I wish they had woodworking for trustees, quite frankly. So I just, great presentations, great staff work and great, great work with respect to all the budget stuff. But we're just governance. It's always the frontline that's doing the real work, the teachers and all the staff, senior management, janitorial staff, everybody. So ours is light lifting in some respects. So I just want to send thanks to all our thousands, two thousand plus employees. So thank you.
Thank you trustee Ward. Final word, Marnie Wilson, go ahead.
Wow, I feel so excited. The alphabet finally worked in my favor. Okay, I want to start by recognizing the hard work of our two outgoing QP presidents, QP eighteen fifty-one Cheryl Barnum and QP twelve sixty Raylene Shalock. Thank you so much for your service. And congratulations to QP eighteen fifty-one's new president, Huma Anasori. And congrats on the reelection of the president of LTA, Tanya Kerr, and DPAC's Alicia Remple. I hope I haven't forgotten anybody. If I have, I apologize. Those different partner groups, I know that it's mainly voluntary because you're doing it twenty-four seven. It's hard work and it often goes unrecognized. So it feels unappreciated, but I just want you to know that I appreciate you. So thank you for sticking in there and doing that hard work. I also want to thank trustee Coburn for all of her work she did and bringing forward the opioid overdose response. I know that it was a long time coming and that I'm really proud of our district for all the work that was done on it, but that she brought it forward needs a little recognition too. I want to recognize anti-racism week this week. And today in particular is the anniversary of the murder of George Floyd. So I hope everybody takes part in some sort of activity, whether it's just reading something to inform yourself more, or I know the district has a lot of great things going on. So that's great. The virtual budget open house, Brian mentioned this, he stole my thunder, May twenty-seventh to May thirty-first. If you've ever come in person to the budget open house, you know how exciting it is. So virtually, I can only imagine. So don't miss that and put your comments in. We really want to hear people's feedback. Next June is Pride Month and the district has an amazing shirt. It's got be an ally. It's a T-shirt that was designed by an incredible artist who is a student named Rebecca from RE Mountain Secondary. I encourage people to purchase the shirt and wear it proudly. And lastly, I want to thank all of our staff, students and parents for carrying us through this pandemic. Without you, everything would have fallen apart. So you've been the glue and you've just kept pushing through even though it's been extremely difficult. And I read somewhere, so don't quote me on this, that there are only twenty-four school days left. So you're almost there. You can do it. And that's all I have. Thank you, everybody, and good night.
Thank you trustee Wilson. And just my final comments, if I could, I just want to say how much I appreciate the board. I love this work. I love Langley. I love our schools and I love our board. And I just want to say that I am committed to making this be the best board ever. And that's something I've always spoken highly of and I believe it is something within our reach and that's my commitment to you. So thank you trustees for your support for me. And also I just want to say thank you for our staff. Specifically, I'd like to recognize Paul and Dale who set up all of the equipment and then we leave and they're still here taking it down. So I applaud you guys. Thank you to all our team. Couldn't do without you, wouldn't want to do without you. All right. Take care, everyone. Have a great night.
You need to adjourn and question period.
Oh, I never see, I'm just so excited, right? Okay, question period. Due to the fact that public will be using an online platform for this regular board meeting, the process for question period is as follows. The board will not be taking questions from members of the public in real time. We encourage members of the public to please submit their questions by emailing feedback at sdthreefive.bc.ca. Questions will be accepted up to one hour after the adjournment of the meeting. Board members or the appropriate staff will respond to the individual directly to acknowledge they've received the email within twenty-four hours. Therefore, our response will be provided to the individual. Purpose is to ensure that those present in the audience have an opportunity to obtain clarification concerning business conducted during that meeting. Priority will be given to responding to one question per person before considering further questions from any individual. The following will help the public develop questions for question period at a board meeting that is in keeping with the goal of a respectful and focused meeting. Questions one, need to be directed to the chair and not to staff. Two, need to be related directly to a topic on the agenda. Three, need to be succinct, focused and not a statement. Four, may not be asked that are related to personnel or directed at an individual trustee. Five, may not be asked that are related to contract negotiations. And lastly, the questioner shall provide their name so it can be reflected in the minutes. All of the above are directions approved by the board in policy number seven, board operations. The chair may answer, may defer to staff or indicate a question may not be keeping with the above guidelines. The board appreciates the public interest and wants to ensure a professional meeting is conducted with question period focused on providing guests with the clarification they seek. Trustees also welcome questions from members of the public apart from question period. Their contact information is available on the school district website. So I call for questions from the public and I now like to call for an adjournment.
Up close.
Trustee. Moved by trustee Ward, seconded. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Have a great night, guys.
All in favor?
Thank you.
We have to vote on it.
Yeah. All in favor.
As you know.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, team.
Good night.